All right, it is five o'clock on Tuesday, October 29th. We will call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting for the City Council of the City of Albernat. We will waive the Pledge of Allegiance and move on to roll call. Counselor Trump?
Present.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Present.
Counselor West?
Present.
Counselor Myers?
Present.
The record reflects that Counselor Sukup is absent, but we do have a quorum to conduct business. With that, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Myers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. That moves us into business. Item A, Hiring Update from the Hiring Committee. This is gonna look familiar, so we did this recently. We are back because the candidate that we previously discussed has withdrawn himself from the position. And so, the Hiring Committee, as we mentioned, has three very qualified candidates. And we were fortunate enough that we reached out to Rebecca, who was one of those very qualified candidates. And she is still available and interested in the position. If we had had two available, I would have hired them both. And so, it's very exciting that she's still entertaining working with us. So, in your packet, I did include the job description again, just so you have it. So that's pages two, three, and four. And then you've got Rebecca's resume on page five, six, and seven. And then we've got the resolution on page eight. Any words from the Hiring Committee? I hate to talk about you, since you're sitting right in front of us. But as you'll see on her resume, she comes to us from Lynn County Treasurer's Office. So, experience with frontline management, as well as municipal processes, I don't wanna call them city, but municipal processes. Project management. She gave some great examples about project management skills, which as we know will be key with this position and all the things that we need to accomplish. Some awareness of budget, dealing with the department budget. And I would say our entire city budget is probably roundabout what the Treasurer's Office has for an entire budget. So familiarity there. I'm also excited about the networks and connections and what she knows about Lynn County. We leverage a lot of their services. And so, she's gonna be a great asset to be able to, you know. I think there's also services we're not leveraging today that could make our lives a little bit easier. So, what opportunities live there? So, that's my two cents. Anything you would like to add, since you're here? I'm happy to read it all.
No, I'm honored to have been chosen. I'm excited to get to work. I was telling Bethany yesterday when we spoke that I have a strong desire to serve in public service. It's just that ticket for me. It's very rewarding to see the work that you put into something pay off for the benefit of others.
Any questions from council? If not, we'll get into the details. All right. So you do have, Rebecca and I worked together on an offer. So she has accepted tentative y'all's approval. So that is resolutions, gonna be page eight, Resolution 2024-39 in your packet. You will see for a starting salary, $75,000 a year. We did build in a contingency clause. What I will say, before we get into that, our people are our greatest asset. I mean, I know the city itself, we own a lot of things. We've got trucks, we've got equipment. Those, I could replace tomorrow. We wreck a truck, I can go out and replace that. Anything we've learned over the last several months, it's the investment that we make in our people and how they help move things forward for us and really support what we do. One of the scariest parts about hiring, I would say, is that you, you know, as much as we can talk to someone and we can ask for examples and we can do these interviews, you don't always know what you're getting. And so, when it comes to setting, you know, are we getting what we think we're getting and putting a price on that and those types of things, you don't know. And so, what we have built in is a contingency clause, where after 90 days, based on milestones established by the council, I would work in conjunction with Rebecca to kind of define those, that she would be eligible for an increase to $80,000 per year. Again, based on those milestones. So for me, that really comes out to a little bit of a carrot for her, to be able to, you know, to work towards that, advance through training, get comfortable in the position. But then also for us, it gives us that time to get comfortable with, you know. Yes, she's got the skills that we would expect based on her resume, but also she's grown into this position and taking ownership of these things, whatever that might look like. And we'll define that together. So, that is something new. Start date would be November 4th. So it's very exciting. She's ready to hit the ground running. Just for the record, that is this coming Monday. So we're within six days, and I am totally okay with that. We did, I did leave, I honored the same PTO offer as before. So the full 10 days of PTO for FY '25. Again, it's not something that really costs us any, you know, tangible money, but it's a nice benefit for our employees, especially with the holidays coming up. I don't want anyone to feel like they can't enjoy time with their families. That's the resolution in a nutshell. I will read it once we, if there's any discussion, I'll go through that first. Any questions?
Yeah, I wanna go over the agreed upon, what's the phrase here?
The established milestones?
Yep, yep. Just touch on that, would you?
Yeah.
You know, just to read that as it is, doesn't mean anything to me.
Okay, and we can change those words, for sure. So primarily, for me, it's goal setting. So we'd set some goals, hit those, and then that would justify this increase. So a great example for me, one that I have in mind with this park project, would be acquiring a grant. We don't have, we have one grant right now that kind of fell in our laps for the park. So for me, a milestone would be that she's acquired us a grant for the park project. So, it would be those types of, these are the things we've accomplished in the first 90, and this is after 90 days. It doesn't have to be at 90 days.
To be established now?
No, we'll work, I'll work with Rebecca on what that can look like, and council will approve those.
All right.
Great question. And if that's not clear, we can add language here. So, you know, y'all can always modify our resolutions.
No, I'll cover that later on. I think y'all have a little more time to think about that.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna define them now, 'cause I want that to be collaborative and well thought out. I noticed it doesn't say at 90 days, it's after 90 days. So 90 days to ramp up. We'll evaluate if maybe at 90, we're not quite there. 120, like, we'll just continue to evaluate. I'm sure you're gonna ask about budget. So I do have, I had Vicki printed off. We already, specifically within the Mayor, Council, City Manager bucket, as well as the Clerk, Treasurer, Financial Admin bucket, which this position was split across, I think it's split across three or four. I'd have to look. Definitely split across City Manager, City Clerk, Treasurer, probably Water. I don't think Streets, so I think it's just the three. But I would have to look if we also had coming out of Streets. I cannot remember. So specific to Mayor, Council, City Manager, and the Clerk, Treasurer, Financial Admin, we are already at 70% and 75% utilization respectively. So we underbudgeted to begin with, and we already have to do a budget amendment to get us through FY '25. So I'll be working with Vicki on what that projection looks like and where we need to get to get us through the year. So when we talk budget, it's kind of a, we gotta fix it anyway type of thing.
I'm surprised we're that far off. I mean, we're paying higher salaries than we anticipated, but we all sat down, you know, we all go through the budget process and just didn't think we'd be quite this far.
I didn't think we'd be quite this. Something must've gotten missed somewhere, but... We'll straighten it out. We've got fund balance, so it's by no means, and then we'll make sure we're square for next year. I'm grateful. For Vicki, she caught it, 'cause we were primarily, we know we have to do one for public safety, and that's where we were looking. And she was like, "Oh, and also, by the way, this looks weird." So I appreciate that she was, was able to call that out for me, but...
Bring it back.
Yeah. 'Cause we have to amend before we go negative.
Sure.
So when we talk budget, it's kind of where we're comfortable at this point, I'm gonna be honest. Background check is already cleared. We are waiting on the drug screening results, but I would expect those by the end of the week.
Yeah.
Oh, yesterday afternoon.
Perfect. Yeah, they're usually two, three business days turnaround. Also update, got the background check report back.
Excellent.
We're all good there. That came in today, so. Any other questions, comments, changes?
What are, are the hours gonna be the same till June or...?
So we're gonna leave the posted hours as 9 to 2, 'cause really Vicki is office administration. Like, she's the one that's gonna process payments and those types of things. Rebecca should be a little bit more on the ground while she'll be in the office and can help cover hours. I don't necessarily wanna change hours based on her availability, but this is a full-time role, so it's gonna be more that 8 to 4-ish.
Okay.
But...
I wasn't sure.
That way, you know, if we've got a project in, you know, if we've got the park project, or a fire hydrant project, or whatever, she's gotta go out and check on it. That gives her ability to get out of the office a little bit without people expecting those office hours.
Totally.
And we've not gotten a lot of feedback. There's been some, but for the most part, what people are trying to accomplish, we've got the Dropbox and they can put it in there, but... Training plan will be a little bit more, I wanna say ad hoc, that's not the right word. It's pretty clear from a clerk's standpoint. Like, there's clerk school, there's all the stuff from the Iowa League of Cities, there's, you know, stuff on the software. So we'll, I'll work with Rebecca to actually look at what this training plan looks like. There are other admins in the area. There is an organization for city administrators that will tie into, League of Cities does have stuff. And then that's where, especially from a milestone standpoint, where my head went first is around grant writing. So there's training classes and those types of things on grant writing. And then, 'cause again, if this position, I'm just gonna be really honest, if this position can go out and find us money, it's gonna pay for itself. I mean, I look at the generator project, we got $100,000 that we then didn't have to pay for a generator. So, that'll be a big focus for me is with each project. Yes.
I'm resourceful.
Have you done grant writing before?
I have not.
Oh, okay.
Nope, but I'm not afraid to admit when I don't know something and consult my best friend Google and...
Vicki did find there, through the leak, there are grant writing classes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It doesn't scare me.
You may have to figure out how the electricity works.
Yeah, exactly. Vicki's working on that.
Do we need to move?
Yes.
Anything else? Are you guys ready for me to read the resolution? Jode, do you need any change to that milestones?
No, I just wanted to talk about it.
Clarify? Okay, perfect. All right, so Resolution 2024-39 for the hiring of a city administrator for the City of Albernat, Iowa, and set wage for the position. Whereas the city, the mayor and city council recognize the need for an experienced and qualified individual to fill the position of city administrator and to ensure the efficient and effective management of city operations, including oversight of city finances, policy implementation, and coordination of city projects. Whereas the city council acknowledges the importance of offering appropriate support, compensation, and benefits to attract and retain qualified personnel for this key administrative role. Whereas the Hiring Committee has identified a suitable candidate for the position of city administrator based on their qualifications, experience, and demonstrated commitment to public service, and therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Albernat, Iowa, that the City of Albernat, Iowa, does hereby hire the low-listed individual as city administrator, subject to the terms and conditions of employment as outlined in the city's personnel policies and procedures. Section 1, the following person and position named shall receive the salary indicated, and the city clerk is authorized to issue warrants, checks, less legally required or authorized deductions for the amount set out below, and make such contributions to IFRS and social security or other purposes as required by law or authorization of the council. So this is city administrator, Rebecca McDonald, $75,000 a year, regular full-time exempt. Contingency clause, the above-named employee's salary will increase to $80,000 per year after 90 days of employment contingent upon the satisfactory completion of established milestones as determined by the city council. Section 2, the above-named employee is subject to the City of Albernat Personnel Policies and Procedures applicable to their department. Section 3, the effective start date for this city administrator shall be November 4th, 2024, contingent upon the satisfactory completion of all pre-employment requirements, including background checks and other necessary screenings. Section 4, an exception to the city's current paytime-off policy is hereby authorized for the city administrator for FY '25. The city administrator should be granted the full 10 days of PTO for FY '25, regardless of their start date during the fiscal year. And Section 5, the salary and PTO benefits established in this resolution shall become effective upon passage of the city council. Be it further resolved, that this resolution supersedes and replaces the previous Resolution 2024-38 related to the hiring of a city administrator. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2024-39?
I would approve Resolution 2024-39.
I have a motion by West. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second by Trump. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we are gonna do a roll call. Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Aye.
Counselor West?
Aye.
Counselor Myers?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you all. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
It's official.
It's the most official.
Yeah, this is the most official.
All right. So we did sneak one other thing onto the agenda for tonight. We considered doing it as an emergency repair, but given that we had this meeting coming up, we went ahead and threw it on the agenda. So that is why Mac is here, for a resolution for the replacement of the furnace in the North Bay of the City Hall Building. I'm gonna hand it off to you to kind of walk us through.
Yeah, so I was just changing filters and stuff to get it ready for the season and couldn't get it to fire. So I had a service guy come out. The heat exchanger is cracked on the old furnace out here. It's 35 years old. So I got options to either just do a furnace again out there or rip all that out and just do like a garage heater, a Resner up on the ceiling. So we just wanted to talk about options. What you guys thought as far as moving forward?
Did you get any estimate check added right here?
There's two in the packet.
Two from the same company.
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Who did the service call.
Yes, we are pursuing additional quotes, but we would go with the lowest, and so not to exceed what we have in front of us should be sufficient. We do have water out there, which is, so not only, there's bathroom, there's a sink where we do water testing, 'cause it's unfiltered water. And then we also use it to melt off trucks and things in the winter times. So essential. And I wanted to make sure we're on their list before temperatures really dip too far.
Do you see one advantage for one system over the other?
I see advantages in both. I mean, the furnace is gonna be more efficient as far as using energy, but it's down on the floor in the way. I mean, a Resner will be up on the ceiling and out of the way. They're kind of built more for garages and the less maintenance. There's not filters and all that to change on them all the time. They're built to be in dusty environments and...
As I say, dust doesn't, settles to the floor, not the ceiling.
Yeah.
So it fits up off the ground.
But they'll be a little less efficient as far as using gas and energy, but also we're not keeping it 75 degrees in there all the time. It's just keeping pipes from freezing and maybe turn it up when you gotta melt out a pot truck and...
Is the location of that current furnace a big hindrance for anything? Or is it just kind of something you get used to working around or...?
I mean, it hasn't been an issue at this point.
It is, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe if we wanna, if we're gonna utilize it more as a bay, if we wanted to like power wash a vehicle inside, I mean, then maybe you worry about getting it wet or something, but...
It's definitely space we can use for storage as well. And that's kind of what's, I think we even found stuff tucked behind it and...
Yeah, sure.
But you will see on the quotes, you have page 10. So these both, both of these quotes are from Global Heating, Air Conditioning and Plumbing out of Todd Mill. So the first is for, just the furnace replacement. So see, that's 96% efficient, and that's 4,750. Page 11 is for the Resner. I think it said those are 80% efficient. He got maximum numbers.
Yeah, that's what he said.
That one's a little bit more expensive. The unit's not, but what they'll do is they'll take out the existing ductwork and remove the existing furnace and those types of things. So initial install, but if we ever had to replace that unit, it would be cheaper for the unit than a regular furnace. Do we need to replumb any gas?
Yeah, I'm sure we'll have to move it over a little bit. And that's all included in it, yeah. New vents for outside for the, yeah. I mean, there'll be some modifications, for sure.
Move the old coil out back and get them all that. Maybe I could use it.
Yep.
And everything, it's good you don't have no room. I'm not sure what you just said. Coil, coil out back.
Air conditioning.
Oh, okay. Here, so you, with the Resner, well, here.
It also kind of depends on what the future plans for the bay are. If we're just gonna have it as a garage versus if we're gonna use it for something else someday.
Yeah, that's a good point. We've talked about renovating out there, possibly renting the space or using it as additional office space. Right now, where I'm at with it is I don't think we would rent it. It's the only space we own. So if anything, if we found ourselves needing more office space, but that's not, I don't think by any means have we outgrown this. And then it is handy for, especially for putting trucks out there, parking, if something ever were to happen to the maintenance shop, or if we had a major repair that needed to be done, we'd at least have somewhere to go with that stuff as well. So, but that is, that is a good call out. There's really no wrong decision here, it's just a matter of what we're most comfortable with.
You know, in the future, a furnace may be a little more flexible, you know, versus having it like a garage setup, but...
How far, another 35 years where we're gonna be doing this anyway? They didn't say the existing, if we put in a new, like, traditional furnace, the existing ductwork will work. We don't have to do anything with the ductwork at that point.
So a Resner, they have a day-long life lived to? I mean, this furnace did a bang-up job. And a lot of you are gonna hear they're gonna run 15 or 20 years max. You know, this other furnace, is it gonna run basically forever or...?
No, with anything. I'm sure there's heat exchangers and stuff like that. I'm working on them too, but, I mean, I would like to think they're built more for that environment versus just a traditional furnace. But, I mean, I have one in my garage, it all.
I mean, that's what you always see in those kind of environments.
Do either come with a warranty?
I didn't ask that. I'm not sure. I don't want to.
New furnace, if we have that size.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. It's smaller, but, you know.
I wonder where he vents the Resner to? 'Cause that's all brick on that side, right?
Yeah, he would have to drill a hole out the back and put a new vent out the back. Mine has just been vented out the back of my garage, just...
8-inch hole, something like that?
Yeah, something like that.
I guess. Mac, what do you want?
He wanted to leave it up to y'all.
Yeah.
What do you want?
I mean, I don't know.
I'd probably go with the Resner myself if I was doing it, but...
Yeah, I kind of am leaning that way as well. There's a lot of ideas that we, things that we could do back there, but...
4750, so 500.
Honestly, we've got enough on our plate, you know. And I don't think that there is a vision of renovation.
Could use that as a...
To use that immediately. So, at some point, you know, the machine shop could probably use a facelift. And having that as, like you mentioned, a place to move some of that equipment and hold it, you know, other than the machine shop while that's getting, you know...
We do probably need to evaluate the pole building situation.
So, you know, I'd rather go that route than worry about putting an ice cream shop next door, so...
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Or you have a pizza shop then? Because there's a commercial business down the street.
Nice part about this bay is it has a floor drain. The maintenance shop doesn't have a floor drain. So when you melt a pot truck off first, hit loader, it just goes everywhere in the other building.
So I do like the Resner on this, just having it up off the ground. You know. The, it's gotta cut down on the amount of dust that gets into it. And also, it clears up, you know, floor space there as well, so...
Well, and even if we were to renovate, we probably, I mean, 'cause I think the unit here is up in the ceiling.
Yeah, it's in the ceiling of the file room.
I don't think we'd necessarily even do a standard furnace, even if we did renovate over there.
I think with the environment, that's, I mean, I think the Resner would probably be the best option.
Okay. Well, I'm going to read the resolution. I'll read it with Resner unit. We left an and/or in there. I guess it's an or, not an and, but... Let's see if y'all would like to approve that Resolution 2024-40, approving the replacement of the furnace in the North Bay of the City Hall Building. Whereas the furnace in the North Bay of the City Hall Building has been determined to have a cracked heat exchanger resulting in the need for replacement to maintain safe and efficient operation of the facility. Whereas the city council has reviewed the condition of the furnace and the available options for replacement, including the installation of a traditional furnace or a Resner unit. And whereas the city is actively pursuing quotes to have the work completed, but given the time-sensitive nature with impending cold weather, will approve an expenditure not to exceed $5,200. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the City of Albernat, Iowa, is hereby approve the replacement of the furnace in the North Bay of the City Hall Building with a new Resner unit based on considerations of functionality, efficiency, and cost-effectiveness. Be it further resolved that the Public Works is authorized to proceed with obtaining the necessary equipment and services for this replacement with total expenditures not to exceed five thousand two hundred dollars and to direct the work accordingly. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2024-40 as read?
From, uh?
Moved by Trump. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion?
Hope, the thing, get it, the good thing to get it done because cracked heat exchanger will.
Yeah, this meeting was timely. He said it fired up the other day and flames went, so. Maybe we should fix that.
Don't tell Chris.
This is great, yes. This is, alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. That motion carries. Final comments. I'll start to my left, Counsel Myers.
Uh, nothing at this turn.
Counsel West?
Gonna be back.
I agree. Counsel Bozenberg?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you.
Counsel Trump?
Glad to have you here. We keep making progress.
I'm excited to get going.
With that, we will confirm the date and time of our next meeting. I do need to make a correction. Our last special, I had November twelfth, it is actually November fourteenth at 7:00 PM. That is our next regular council meeting, again, barring any need for special meetings. And with that, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So what?
Moved by Myers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by West. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned at 5:31 PM. Thank you all.